Thank you all for coming to this meeting of the Town of Stockbridge Planning Board. On Tuesday, November 2, 2021, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And to start with the approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was on October 19. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? I have one point, Jennifer, if you have them in front of you.
Yes.
Well, I think I did. Oh, in the section on 37 Mackinac Road, the big paragraph at the end, you say, "To protect Lake Waddles will be placed on both sides of Silver." Member Slasek motioned to accept the amendment as presented, and Member Rafferty seconded, but there's no record of a vote.
Oh, sorry.
And I think, I think we did vote on this.
Oh, yes, we did.
So.
Okay, yeah, I will. Sorry about that.
So I have one question in the same paragraph. Bill, are you still enforcing your rule about submitting changes in writing?
I don't think it's my rule, but what's your point?
This is not a change.
This is not a change. This is a, a missing item. This is not my opinion or anything. It should, it should have included the vote tally, and it didn't. But what's your point, Kate?
My question is, Jennifer, in the paragraph on 37 Interlaken, you've got there, "The steps will show only two to two and a half feet of the length." In the beginning of the sentence, it says, "He will get ocean stone from the quarry about five feet long and three foot wide." I think that he said five by three. I did not hear him say two to two and a half feet.
No, that's what he said.
No, I checked the tape, and he described the stones as being five feet wide. So which is it, five feet wide or two to two and a half feet wide? Or length?
The length was five.
Right.
But somebody said, I don't know, I'll have to listen, maybe it was, was Rob, said that it was only going to be two to two and a half feet.
I think that the two to two and a half feet was with reference to the stones.
That's what I thought.
Rocks alongside the steps.
And that was not something that he ended up agreeing, or anyone ended up agreeing to. So I would just remove that one phrase.
Okay.
Where it says, "The steps will show only two to two and a half feet of the length." I would just remove that.
I think that's, that's a good point, and I don't think we need a written thing to change that. So with those changes, unless there are any more, can we, can you call the role, Jennifer, to approve the minutes as amended?
Okay. Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Gary?
Yes.
Wayne?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Carl, are you there? Yeah, I don't think you were.
Okay. Okay, the next item is to change the name of the road at the Stone Ridge, the old Stone Ridge development, to Campion Farms Road. Are you, Nick?
Yes.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome, thank you. Miss Gilbert.
Politician.
Come up close, not too close, but.
Just close enough.
No offense.
Not that there's anything wrong with it.
Some of us can go unmasked because we're in cubicles, so please don't be offended that I'm not unmasked.
No, no worries.
I talked to Mike Canales about this, this request, and he said, Jennifer, did he get, did he catch up with you?
He caught up with me, too.
Okay, so you got the.
We're just talking about the name change.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, all right, I don't know what else is. Yeah.
Anything to add to the?
No, it's relatively straightforward, and really, the purpose or reasoning is non-susceptive. It's more, reflects kind of the history of the land that was over there. It's a little bit more relevant for those purposes. And when the idea had been introduced a while ago, it seemed to be supported again by those people I mentioned then that I met with a while back now, because of the fact that it eliminated any confusion primarily for emergency response purposes with Stone.
Hill.
Stone Hill, right?
Yeah.
Stockbridge.
Yeah.
And so they thought it was just, made sense. And this has been a, the name change question is one that, through Jennifer, and also directly through Chris Heath, had just kind of felt it out and said, you know, any issues, any issues foreseen? And I think it, the, well, I know the response back was, you know, it's non-susceptive, non-material, so no issue. So it's kind of a straightforward request. The, the other issue that I just alluded to was the lot numbering, and that was one that was more of a verification when we had the meeting.
And that's just to save your breath.
Yeah.
It's not something we, as Planning Board, are competent to deal with.
Right.
That goes before the Board of Assessors and.
Yeah.
Somebody else, but not us.
Yeah, and I can re-propose it, but Michael Blay was at the meeting also, because that was one of the issues, and he's the one that really suggested, he suggested and said, "Well, here's how I see the lots being laid out for numbering purposes." It was fine, so I, you know, I can re-propose that, and maybe we don't even need to, but I can ask.
Not here.
Yeah.
The number, the numbering is not, not our, in our purview, so.
That was my feeling, so, but I figured I would throw it in just to see if there was any comment, but understood.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions or comments from members of the board?
No.
I don't see any public members, or public, members of the public.
There are. There's some, at least, Lisa and Anita Shorner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, those are the only two.
Okay, any comments from the public? Hearing none, I think all we need to do is to vote to approve the change.
Okay.
We're not, we're not, it's not a special permit, it's not a Form A, it's just change the name, that's all.
So I make the motion, we change the name of Stone Ridge to Campion Farms Road. Campion Farms Road.
Did you get that, Jennifer?
I'll second it.
Gary, second. Any further, any discussion? Hearing none, Jennifer, can you call the role, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Carl? Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for purposes of putting a bow on the top, I'll talk to the assessor again about their process for just entering that in the database, or however it needs to be entered, because I think it will run through the assessor's office as.
Yeah, he'll have to change the, he'll have to change the map, the lot numbers on the map.
Yeah.
Your name, yeah.
I may coordinate again up with Chris Heath, just if he's any recommendation, but otherwise, it seems like it's pretty simple administrative. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
See you. Okay. Thank you.
Moving right along. Brent, would you like to step up and talk to us about eight Mackinac Terrace, please?
First, we can vote.
Did we not vote? On Campion Farms?
No.
Cat's been shown on my book. Phil's very different with the pesci class.
Putting home in there.
We can't, we can't hear you.
Okay, I will clarify. Jennifer's reminding me of a discussion she had earlier with Michael Canales about this matter, and because we're not the approving authority here, we have to vote as to whether we want to recommend this to the Select Board, and if so, listen to the, the plan, or vote not to hear it and not to discuss it, not, not to recommend it and not to, if we're not going to recommend it, we don't need to listen to you.
I just wanted to be available.
No offense, no offense.
I'd like to have the opportunity to listen to you. I want to listen to you.
Is that, is that clear? Is that clear, everybody?
So the first decision is, is whether or not the Planning Board wants to review this request, and that, that doesn't need to be done with Brent's input?
That's right. Well, yeah, we need to, it does not need Brent's input at this stage. It's just a decision of this board whether or not to proceed in recommending. If we choose not to recommend, we don't need to hear Brent's take on this project.
Do we have interest in this, or?
Well, I think that's the, I think that's.
What's the actual?
That's the point. I mean, you've read the, the proposal. It's a rebuilding of a house with some, you know, changes.
So just to be clear, I got the proposal on Friday, so I haven't read it, and nor have I had a site visit, maybe others have, so.
No, nobody's.
We didn't need a site.
Nobody's made a site visit, and I've read it, I don't know who else hasn't read it.
I've read it.
I don't know, getting it on Friday to discuss on Tuesday sounds like enough time to me, normally.
For me, site visits are pretty important, so I would, you know, if, if the board decides it wants to take this on, I would need a site visit.
Do we have any real jurisdiction here? We're just recommending this to, what are we, what are?
We, we don't, we are not the approving authority of this special permit.
So we're recommending to send it on to the selectmen to do their.
Either with our recommendation.
Okay.
Or.
If we want to change anything that's on.
Or declining to recommend, and, and then the Select Board has nothing from the Planning Board as they deliberate.
Okay.
I would say we don't have any purview here. I would vote to pass it on to the selectmen without our input.
That's, that's sort of my point, my, my view, too, Wayne. But maybe we should have a motion before we discuss that formally. If somebody would make a motion to consider recommending this, making the planning, having the Planning Board recommend this project to, this application to the Select Board, in which case we'll hear Brent tonight. Is there a motion to that effect?
That we didn't want to hear.
Which we can vote.
I thought we were deciding, we were deciding as a first step whether we would, we would review this at all.
That, that's sort of my, that's what I was trying to get at, Kate. Maybe I didn't do it very artfully.
Roundabout.
Here's what I'd like a motion for, is to consider to, whether to recommend this project, to consider whether to recommend this project to the Select Board. Now, you can vote yes, in which case, if the A's have it, we'll, we'll listen to Brent, and we'll either make or not make a recommendation. Or you can vote no on that motion, and that's the end of it. Brent can go home and have a.
Bill, how about if you change recommend to review?
Well, except that our, our requirement is to recommend or not recommend, not, not to review or not review.
Our requirement here is to decide whether we want to review this request.
No, no, it's to recommend the project, the, the application to the Select Board, not to review it. That's my understanding. And so.
So we're voting on whether or not we are, just so I'm clear, we're voting on whether or not we are going to review this, this project.
That's right, whether or not we're going to consider recommending it. I think the point is consider recommending it, and I think.
When you say consider recommending it, to me, it sounds like you are saying, "Yeah, this project looks great, we're fine with it."
Well, here's what, I think the responses to this motion, if, if we ever get it made and seconded, would be yes, if you want to review, if you want to, if you want to listen to Brent and consider recommending it or not, recommending it to the Select Board. Or no, in which case, we're not going to recommend it, we're not going to review it, we're not going to listen to Brent, and we're done with it. I think those are the, those are what yeses and nos mean for this motion, which I'll repeat, which is, I'd like a motion for the Planning Board to consider whether to recommend the eight Mackinac Terrace special permit to the Select Board.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, unless Jennifer's got something different there.
I'm still confused over the yes and the no part of it. So.
I, I don't, I just.
A vote right now would send him to the selectmen.
And we're not going to vote on it. We're not going to listen to it, we're not going to vote on it. So a no vote says we're not going to listen to it or vote, we're going to pass it along.
So did you second it?
I did second it, unless.
Is there further discussion? You, you're.
I got it now.
Kate, do you have any questions or issues?
I'd sort of be interested to hear, I know Wayne said he didn't feel it was our jurisdiction, and I'd be interested to hear from the rest of the board, if you're willing to, you know, explain, explain your thinking on why the Planning Board would not look at this.
Well, as I looked at the plans, I saw nothing that I objected to, particularly, the selectmen are going to look at it and go over it with a fine-tooth comb, of course, and I didn't feel there was anything I wanted to object to in that, in that application. So I, I'm fine with passing it on to the selectmen.
Okay. Thank you, Marie.
Me, too. Any other comments before we?
No, it's not on LPOD, it's not on waterfront, so we're not draining directly into the bowl. And everything looked good to me for the plans that were submitted, so I recommend sending it on to the Select Board, too.
Well.
We are definitely draining right into the lake there, but I guess, you know, my feeling is, is that I can make my comments to the Select Board individually, so I don't really, I don't really feel the need to review this at the Planning Board level.
Okay, any other comments?
Gary.
Gary? Okay.
No, it's just, it's, I don't know, I'm just, I'm confused as to why all of a sudden we, we have this in front of us. It's just, we've never had one.
It's in the bylaw, it's, it's in the bylaw, the wording is in the bylaw that, that special permit applications, there, there is wording that allows for review by other boards.
I understand that, but it's just that we haven't had it before, you know, or at least in a long, long time, I should say.
I don't know whether this is Michael Canales being more alert to this.
Oh, maybe.
Than his predecessor.
I mean, because.
It's Brent White, actually. I, I'm, through, through my work with the board over the years, again, most special permits that we file were typically before you, because of the Lake and Pine and Orville District, and in that process, typically, there's been separate motions. So I wanted to make sure, as a part of the, the authority that I know the Planning Board has, that I made myself available, if you wish to have any questions answered.
Okay, well, no, I'm.
As a part of your goal, so we proactively did that. I wanted, I wanted to make sure I was not in a position before the Select Board, and they asked me the question, "Has the Planning Board been afforded the opportunity to ask any questions on this?" That is why I'm here this evening.
Okay, all right.
Oh, good. I think there are some, there are some concerns about this from historic, but they, you know, they can, they can weigh in as, as they see fit in their, in their capacity as a board.
So if there are no further comments, the motion which has been made and seconded is to consider recommending the eight Mackinac Terrace special permit to the Select Board. And a yes vote means we would recommend it, and we'd listen. A no vote means we're not going to recommend it, if that carries, and that's the end of it. It's up to the Select Board. Is that clear?
Yeah, we're just handing it on.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Can you call the role, Jennifer?
Bill?
No.
Marie?
No.
Nancy?
No.
Gary?
No.
Wayne?
No.
Kate?
No.
Okay, that's everybody.
Thank you all for your time.
No, thanks for being careful. Thanks for your due diligence.
Have a nice dinner. Thanks for coming.
All that work, that was coming, all his stuff.
I know.
Sorry, we didn't give you a dry run for the Select Board.
But it's out with the conservation commissioner, so that's okay.
Good.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate your due diligence.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. I, I still would recommend, next time, if this comes up again, Bill, having the wording be the Planning Board has decided not to review this request. I just think it's clearer.
Okay, point, point noted. The next item is a discussion of Jeff Lacy's visits to sites in town. We talked about this at the last meeting, we agreed that he would come on the 20th of November. But in, in thinking about this a little more, and I know Carl, who's not here, submitted a laundry list of places he could visit, at least it had to be 20, 20 different places on the list. And I have some names, and I'm sure some of you have names, too, names of places. I think that, Jeff, I've talked to Jeff about this, and his practice in the past, when doing something like this in a town that he's been consulting for, is to make these visits by himself. It leaves no opportunity for any of us or the public to deliberately or by accident bias him. It leads him to make his own conclusions without us kind of hinting at maybe what the conclusions we'd like to hear, or not like to hear, as the case may be. It actually gives him more flexibility from a scheduling standpoint, because if, if we agree to that approach, he could come virtually any day, it wouldn't have to be on the 20th. It would also eliminate the need for getting around this cumbersome public meeting issue and running a bus, or trying to figure out who's coming and where and when, and do we need permissions for a big crowd of people to walk onto a piece of property? If it's just him, at least for the properties that I have in mind, and again, I welcome your thoughts as well, one person walking on and then walking off is less likely to cause any kind of stir. So I'd like to suggest that we agree that he come on his own and view the properties that we suggest to him. I suppose if he, in looking at the town and town maps, wants to look at some others, that's his option. I don't think we want him to spend 10 hours doing this, it's our money. And I think we may be able to accomplish what, the, the value of his, his site visits in far less than that many visits. Does anybody have a, a comment or question about that idea of having him do this work on his own? Obviously, followed up by a report, which he would make to us, of his views on the properties, and in a couple of cases, maybe taking maps and showing the difference between how a particular piece of property has been developed or is proposed to be developed, perfect example is Campion Farms, and how it would look if, if the Natural Resources Historic Preservation zoning bylaw were in effect for that, that plot. So I think there's real value in, in his visits, his site visits. Does anybody object to his going by himself?
I don't object, I think it's a good idea. I, and I'd really like to have him take a couple of properties, like you said, and show what they are, and show what it would look like if he did it. I think that would be real helpful, if they followed the bylaw that he would like to put through. I, I think that'd be really helpful. And I don't feel anybody going with him is any real benefit. I think he can do it, you know, better on his own.
I've, I've thought right from the beginning that was going to be so cumbersome.
Yeah.
To be dragging so many people around, or even if it was eight, just, I thought that was going to be very difficult to manage and do. Fine with it.
Yeah.
I thought it was very effective how he did those other properties that we went out to look at out west in the state, where the aerial maps, you know, and the delineation where things could be or would be, or that was very helpful. And I think if he could do the same thing with several properties here, with a report, you know, and share screen with everybody, I think that would be good.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that is his intention, at least with some of, some of the properties. Gary, do you have a view?
That's fine, for me, I mean, I, I agree, I, I was trying to visualize in my mind how that, whatever, come about.
Yeah, it was going to be awkward. Kate, your, your views?
I'm kind of surprised to hear because, hear this, because he, he certainly, that's not what he said at the last meeting, I'm not sure why he's, he's changed his position on that. And I think there is value to, to having the board there on site. As you know, I'm a big believer in site visits, so I, I think there's value to, to being there as a board and in hearing, hearing what he has to say, and, you know, hearing the board's thoughts. After all, the board is going to be the one deciding on these projects, not Jeff Lacy. So it seemed to me like it was a good, a good idea for the, the board to get out and about and see some of these properties, and as, as a collective group, and be able to hear what he has to say and hear, hear what we have to say as board members and what our thoughts are. And I thought it would be important to hear, you know, as, as an example, how board members would handle some of these properties. I think that's, you know, there are judgment calls involved here, so it's important to me, as a resident, to know what Planning Board members thinking will be on some of these, these, these large properties, and not so large properties, by the way. So depending on how the, how the acreage is handled. So, yeah, so I thought there was value to, to going as a group. I didn't think it was such a big deal, I mean, you just decide on the different properties, and I didn't really see why a bus would be needed, it didn't even seem advisable, given the pandemic and so on. We just drive in our cars to the, the individual, go from one property to the next, and post it as a public meeting, and let people follow along if they want to. So, you know, that's, that's my thinking on it. I didn't really have, I thought it was a good idea, so I'm a little bit disappointed.
Marie?
I think the discussion that Kate is talking about is, is really valuable, but I think we'd have a better discussion after Jeff has looked at it and, and put his plan, you know, in place, or, or talked about it, rather than like right on the spot, and this is the first time he's seen it. I mean, I think we could have a better discussion once he determines how he might do it or what might change. I think that might be a better discussion, I don't know.
The other, the other thing, to your point about the importance of site visits, this is different from when we went in, in two groups to go see places in Chutesbury and surrounding area. We had never seen those before, and. We had never seen those before, and he was showing us things we'd never seen before. Every name on the list we come up with of places for him to see are ones we're going to be familiar with already. We know about Campion Farms, we know about 37 Interlake, and we know about Elm Court and Eden Hill and the Hylawn Farm property and Stone Hill. It's not as if by visiting, we suddenly have our eyes opened that, wow, I've never seen this before, and how interesting is it? I just don't see the value, given that he's going to report back to us on his take on these properties. I don't see the value in going along with him when he's specifically asked, and maybe he's, I don't know whether he changed his mind or not, but I talked to him last week, and I know he feels strongly that he would prefer to go by himself.
He suggested it at our meeting. I think he suggested it at our meeting.
Well, I think he suggested it after, you know, hearing the discussion. I think he was like, whoa, you know? But, I mean, I, you know, while we know where the properties are on the map, on the road, you know, I don't feel like I can just walk into Elm Court or the Disisto property. So, or, you know, I have driven up in Stone Ridge to look at it, but it's private property. So I don't feel like I could just go in there and, you know, make myself at home. So I do think that, I think there is, I think site visits are incredibly important, and I also am still disappointed that he has never provided the information that Wayne and I asked for. So I don't know, you know, what confidence I can have that, you know, the type of information that will be helpful to me will be forthcoming.
Nancy?
I thought Wayne had a good point a few meetings ago where we don't know by looking at the road or walking up on property a little bit where the best part of this whole 500-acre parcel would be without an aerial photograph. I think that's what's most important to me is with him coming up with aerial pictures of where the trees are and the water and the, you know, where things could be, because you can't tell by just walking around property. Because I thought 40 acres at these places was huge. I can't even picture 500 acres, 200 acres in my head.
Yeah, okay. Any other thoughts? So the question to, that I raised, which is, do we agree that Jeff should make these visits by himself? I think there's a consensus that he should. I don't know that we need a formal vote on this. It's not a legal matter. It's not something that needs to go into the record.
Consensus implies that everybody agrees, so I would ask you to change your wording on that and just say that however many members of the board agreed that it was fine and that there was one dissenting opinion.
Do you want to vote? I mean, do you want to motion?
Would you prefer to have a vote?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
So, okay, I'll move that we asked Jeff Lacy to come to Stockbridge to observe the properties that we asked him to and give us back a report on how he would, I don't know, maybe we don't need this. I made the motion that we invite Jeff Lacy to Stockbridge to look at properties that we indicate.
And that he do it by himself.
And he do it by himself and report back to us.
Is there a second? There's a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Jennifer, would you call the roll?
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Nay.
Okay, the next part of this is which properties should he look at? And I'm sure you all have thought about this. As I said, Carl had a laundry list of properties. I'm sure he didn't mean for Jeff to visit all of them, but he was just kind of doing a data download of properties that he thought of as he was sitting in front of his computer. The ones that, I came up with five that I thought would be instructive. Obviously 37 Interlake, and that to me is a no-brainer. And by the way, the gate is open, and I think if one person effectively working as a consultant for a Stockbridge public body goes into that property and walks around, as long as the gate remains open, there is no private property, no admittance sign there that I've seen. I don't see the harm in that happening.
Simple phone call, too.
Or call Sean Ferry, who is his man in town.
I think it'd be wise just to let somebody know.
So 37 Interlake and Campion Farms, formerly known as Stone Ridge.
That would be great for an investigation.
Yeah. Hylawn Farm, the property, their property that's in Stockbridge across the west side of Route 7, which is a big undeveloped plot.
How many acres is that?
I don't know, but it shows up big on the large property map.
I'd like to include a 20-acre, 20-acre, a small.
Hang on, hang on. Let me, let me finish my list, and then.
Okay.
Everybody else can come up with their list, please, or agree with mine or disagree, whatever. So the Hylawn property, Campion Farms, 37 Interlake, and Stone Hill, which is the one that is confused with Stone Ridge, the one off Old Stockbridge Road. And he could do a drive-by of Elm Court, which is gated and closed, but he could at least have a look at it. And then I think he should drive through Eden Hill, the Marion Fathers', which is another large plot that eventually could be developed in town.
Yeah, that's a good one.
So that's my short list, but I think one of the reasons these names make sense to me is 37 Interlake, obvious. Campion Farms and Stone, Campion Farms and Stone Hill are two subdivisions which I think Jeff would be interested in comparing and doing a, you know, an overview, maybe an aerial photograph of how he, under the NRHPZ, would lay out plots on those properties in the interest of preserving open space. So I think that's, those strike me as particularly attractive for that purpose. And the Hylawn and Eden Hill properties are big. They're in private hands. Who knows how long they will remain so in, you know, the hands of the current owners? It wouldn't surprise me if they changed hands at some point in the not-too-distant future. And I think you ought to look at those. So those are my five. Marie, do you want to?
I have, those are, those are fine. I agree with those, and I would add Crepollo to that list. I think Crepollo is possible changing hands at some point, and that's a huge, that's a beautiful property. So I think that's one of the possibilities. That would, that would be my list, Bill, I think, with adding Crepollo to that.
Wayne?
You've covered the ones I thought were important, so.
Okay. Gary?
The only other one I can think of right now is just the Camp.
Mackinac.
Camp Mackinac.
I wonder if that's open in the winter or in the late fall. But again, a phone call could probably, there's somebody there.
There's somebody there.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Nancy?
Oh, well, those sound great to me. Is that too many?
No, I think we've.
We give them a route all around.
Right. And he, I think he's, he says he's pretty good at finding his way. I mean, this is not a terribly complicated town with lots of interstates to get on and So I think we've got seven, if I count correctly. The five I cited, plus Crepollo, plus Camp Mackinac. Now, Kate?
Yeah, I would also suggest either White Pines or Andor or Oranoke, which are properties that have already been developed.
Oranoke is the Berkshire Cottage, the Gilded Age Cottage on Prospect Hill Road. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Kate?
I think it would be worth potentially look at, I mean, I'm not, not expecting that all three of these will go on the list, but I think that Meadow Road or Tree Farm, that whole, those, both those areas were developments.
Yeah.
And I think that Meadow Road is frankly, is another example of something that really gives, gives me pause about this whole approach because I didn't see anything, I mean, the only built property that Jeff showed us in his town and the next-door town Wendell, the only built-out property predated his bylaw, and I couldn't see that it looked anything, you know, I couldn't see that it looked any better than Meadow Road, frankly, or Tree Farm Road, that area as well, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, so that, that's five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine names.
There's a question in chat from Anita Schwerner, when you're ready for it.
Okay, what is it?
It is, will you provide information to him about the identified properties?
He asked for a little bit of that.
Yeah, yes, the answer is yes.
Can I speak for a second? That's Anita. Hi, Bill. Would it be okay if I ask? I just wondered if maybe some properties like Cherry, is it Cherry Hill or Cherry Street, where there are large properties that potentially could be sold, or Prospect Hill? There's one that looks like something's going on on the, on the right, like it's being subdivided. And there's one on Larry Wad. There's some big properties for sale, some that are just land, one that's a big farm that says it could be subdivided, I believe in the ad, rather than places that are already built, or including places that are already built or not built, because you're talking about empty pieces of land also, right, that could be developed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, did you have your hand up? You're muted.
I wanted to echo Anita's point that it seems like these are heavy on sort of cottage-era estate properties and light on property subjects that might be open to subdivision in the future. And since most of focus has been on the subdivision bylaw, I think that that's sort of more relevant. I would also be very curious to see what 20-acre parcels there are and which of those have houses built between 1850 and 1920, so that, you know, that, that list should inform this list, I would think. Thank you.
Really good point. I agree with that. One concern I have here is that this whole process now with him going alone doesn't acknowledge the fact that he's not going to be here making the calls. I mean, I, it would be a conflict of interest for him to now start looking for work, you know, as a planner on these projects. So these calls are going to be made by the Planning Board, so I think it's important to understand what, how the Planning Board will deal with these properties and what their opinions will be.
And I think we will have, we will absolutely have the time to and the importance of weighing in on these properties after reflecting on his reports to us. It's not as if we're, we're taking what he says at face value and agreeing necessarily with, with his ideas or his.
All right. So I just have a question for Wayne. Wayne, did you ever get that information that we were asking for?
No, I didn't.
So just to cut to the chase, then, I count my five, Eden Hill, 37 Interlake, and Hylawn Farm, Stone Hill, and Campion Farm, add Crepollo, Camp Mackinac, that's seven, White Pines or Oranoke, that's eight, and Meadow Road is nine. I think that's a pretty good list. I take Patrick's point about smaller properties, but, and there's nothing to keep, particularly if he's going by himself, Jeff from wandering all over town and putting his nose in wherever he sees an opening. And if he has an opinion on it, he can, he can express it. We're not trying to invade private property. This is a consultant for a public body that's doing the public body's work. Yes, Patrick?
Sorry.
You've got your phone and your, your computer on.
I liked them.
Well, I'm sorry, that was a screw-up. Hey, would you do me one little favor and take the camp off the list? That's been a camp for 95 years, and I really don't want to start thinking about somebody building whatever on that property. Like, if they come to us with that idea, that's great, but really, let's take the camp off the list. That is like a jewel of the town. This is my opinion.
I agree. It's like, ah, I mean.
We're not, I mean, I suppose they could jump to a conclusion that we're going to shut them down or something.
It is a jewel, and that's why it would be.
It would be a shame if it stopped being a jewel.
Yeah.
A lot of residential summer camps have closed in, in recent years, and it's when, I know it's been there for years, it's got a loyal historic following, their third and fourth generation kids going there, but camps go out of business.
Yeah, that one generates $5 million in revenue a year. I'm not too worried about that. I just, that's just my personal opinion, anyway.
What do you think, Gary?
I just, I mean, there's a reason not to look at any of them, no?
Yeah.
Yes.
37 Interlake is a jewel. I mean, the building isn't, but the land is. Okay.
We're looking at the possibilities, I think, is what the whole purpose of this exercise is.
Yeah. What would happen?
Yeah.
If in a subdivision versus a NRHPZ on these, these properties?
Yeah, I think Patrick's concerned about the, the whole byright thing means that there really isn't potentially a whole lot of control here. So I think it's making him nervous, but I'll let you speak for yourself, Patrick.
Okay, so we've got nine names. I'll convey these to, to Jeff, and, and I did note, Patrick, your point about 20-acre properties. If he feels he should look, he's got these maps. I think you've sent them, haven't you, to Jeff, the large plots and, yeah. He can, he can, you know, be discreet and look around elsewhere. So, you know, we talked about November 20th, but that was in a different context when most of us were going to go with him. I think now it's up to him to come when he wants and then report back to us. Simple as that. Okay.
Could I make one point that was just brought up? Could you please explain to people, because there's a lot of misinformation about that driveway on Prospect Hill? People think that it's going to be a subdivision in there and not just a private driveway.
Sorry.
There's a lot of calls we're getting and from people, I hear people on the street saying, what's going on up there? Is there a subdivision? No, it's just a driveway that we permitted on Prospect Hill, the extra-long driveway.
Yes.
I think it's going, a subdivision going in there, but it's not. If you could please reiterate that and say definitively that it's not a subdivision going in there.
And reiterate that to Jeff?
No, to.
The audience.
The audience.
You just did.
Than I would have. Thank you. Okay. The last item, unless there's other business, is this survey of town residents. Last week, Marie and I talked to, at Michael Canales's recommendation, to the BSC Group, which is a consulting firm that worked with the town on municipal vulnerability. Patrick, you were intimately involved in that. And they did a great job as the sort of manager of the whole complicated process that went on earlier this year. Michael thought that they might be an organization, an independent organization that would, might be able to help us with a survey of town residents, as we've discussed in the past. So we talked with two of their people via Zoom last week, and they did express interest in principle. Unfortunately, I don't have feedback from them yet. They have promised feedback and it just hasn't, hasn't come through. I think they got caught up in more active projects. But there is a, the beginning of a dialogue with this outfit. We have no indication of what their services would cost or how extensive they would be. They pointed out how important the creation of questions in the survey would be and how they would need our input to make sure that the, the subject matter is, is properly covered without formulating questions that betray any, any particular bias. So actually, doing surveys like this is an art. It's, it's a, it's a specialized practice and it isn't, it's not something everybody can do. But these guys, they think there's a, a program at UMass and Amherst that, where a professor is teaching graduate students about, in, in planning matters about how to take surveys. And he was going to check on that and see whether that professor might, with cheap labor from graduate students, be willing to, to help us. Obviously, this is going to cost something. We, we have no idea how much. And he also said he would send an outline of how they would approach creating a survey if it, if it were this BSC Group, this consulting firm that I mentioned. So.
Was it a professor from UMass?
I don't know. The name was not mentioned. And I'm not sure the consultant at BSC actually knew the name. He was going to, he was going to check.
Could you get that information, please?
Sorry?
Could you get that information for me, please?
Yeah, when I talk to him, I will ask.
What would this survey pertain to?
To the NRHPZ bylaw. And potentially the cottage-era estate bylaw.
Well, we, we received an email from Laura Dubester. And as part of the municipal vulnerability preparedness program, we actually did a survey, a housing survey. And Laura had asked that the planning board discuss this. Did you see that? Did anybody else see that email?
I, I saw the, I, I was in those meetings and I believe I saw the report. It was months ago. And if your question is, has the planning board considered it, the answer is no. Not yet.
Well, I, I think that we should put that on the, the next agenda for discussion.
Okay, Patrick?
The, the survey's only got like 11 or 12 questions, but the answers are actually really interesting and really reinforce some of your board's priorities, like for example, the interest in ADUs. And I think it would, I, I have it I could share if you want to briefly look at it. But I think that having a discussion around it, there were 211 responses, about two-thirds from residents and a third from second homeowners. And, and it really does shed some light onto, you know, what folks think about in their golden years in terms of like, you know, living in the town or not.
Patrick, could you go to the trouble of distributing that again to the planning board, please?
Yeah, do you want me to share it or do you want me to just distribute it?
Distribute it. I, I have it, Patrick, but if you can distribute it to the full board. And Bill?
I'll send it right now.
Bill, can you put that on the agenda for the next planning board meeting for discussion, please?
Which?
The housing survey.
That doesn't have anything to do with those.
Yeah, I, I think your point about us considering it is appropriate. I'm not sure it belongs on the next agenda, but I'll, I'll consider it.
Jennifer has copies of those.
How does housing not have something to do with housing, with the housing bylaw?
Lots of things have, have to do with planning, and we don't consider them at every meeting. I'm not, I'm not trying to downgrade or denigrate this survey. I just, I'm not sure we need to commit to addressing it in two weeks' time. Let's, let's, let's see it. Patrick has kindly agreed to distribute it. Some of us need plenty of time to read it, and we should take that time because it's an important document. Jennifer has it. Okay, good. How many copies do you have?
It's about this.
I know.
Yeah. I know.
So when you do the survey, do they, do they give you the, the collate, the answers? Or is it like, we have to read everybody's opinion?
That's, that's.
And that's included in the price.
One of the important parts of their service is, is interpreting the results.
And we would have these in a timely manner. If we want to get this bylaw on the next voting with the next town meeting, we got to get hustling on our timeline here. So that's what I'm concerned about with holding things up. Because if we can do a vote on, we're going to accept Draft 8 and vote among ourselves if we want it before we get too much further along and involved in other things, other aspects of it, that, that's my thing. Because we're on Draft 8, and this has been taking so long and costing a lot of money and.
I don't disagree. No, I agree. The clock is ticking.
Yeah.
Giving you money. How much, Bill, you were, you were the one, you were the liaison to, to Jeff Lacy in terms of invoices and so on. How much has been spent this, this fiscal year on his, on Jeff Lacy's work?
The short answer is I don't know. I asked Mike Canales several weeks ago, and I think he, it got lost in the shuffle. I will follow up. So that's the story so far on, on the survey, where to come. Is there any other business?
I just have one question. Have you guys decided not to do the, the bonus densities around things like workforce housing or senior housing? Because that was one of the unresolved questions with Jeff, and it's not in Version 8.
Yeah, there are other unresolved questions still out there too, Patrick. You're right. We took it out and then we, I think we got close to suggesting we put it back in, in part because of the housing, the, the concern about housing in this, in this town.
Yeah.
So, and what's your plan for dealing with some of these, most of these things in the bylaw where there, there is not, I mean, I know there's not consensus on the bylaw period, but Jeff had suggested at the last meeting for, you know, things like the percent of land going into conservation. You just make it, each one of these different items, you just make it a vote of the board. So is that the plan at this point?
Yeah, I think, I think that's one approach we can take, is to just go through it and vote on every open item.
Okay.
Before we leave, one of the things that I found a few months ago, and you know that monthly slick magazine about Berkshire County real estate? And this was an ad in one of the issues three or four months ago. Kind of interesting, what we talked about earlier. This is Campion Farms. And when I showed this to Jeff Lacy, he said, this is a typical cluster development. And I could have a field day with NRHPZ on this same property. If you look, to me, it looks like there is no preserved open space at all. It, I'm told, people have been up there, that it's a beautiful setting, in a nice location. But it's going to be filled with large houses. I mean, literally filled with large houses.
There is land in conservation restriction on that property.
I'm sorry?
There is land in conservation restriction on that property.
It's not indicated on the map. Not, not that this is an official map.
That's a real estate map. That's not the, that's not an official map. I'm guessing that you're looking at a real estate map.
I don't know what you'd call it. It was an ad in, in the real estate magazine.
Yeah, that's, that's not considered a.
Kate, is there more land than what, what those nine acres, those nine lots are? Does, is there land in, in that subdivision that's open space? I mean, I don't know. I, I'm looking at what Bill just gave us that has nine lots. But I, you can't see the boundary of the whole property, but is there?
Last I looked it up, there was a portion that was in conservation restriction, from what I could tell. Now, I'd have to, I'd want to double-check it.
The houses have to be in envelopes. That's my recollection.
What did you say?
In envelopes.
In other words, you know, the, there has, there can only be, you know, like.
A house in a certain spot on that lot?
Yeah.
But the owner of like Lot 3 owns all of Lot 3 and his houses in where you see that little picture.
Yeah.
But the rest of it is going to be.
It can't be developed.
He can't, he can't build on it. Okay.
And that's how they're all set up.
And that's how they're set up. Okay.
I will email this to you, Kate, and to Carl, since you're not physically here.
And could you also ask Jeff, Bill, to provide, I made so many, I made notes on the handouts that he had for Chutesbury and Wendell. Can you ask him to, to email those to, to me so I have a clean copies?
Okay.
And if he doesn't know how to do that for some reason, or if he encounters problems with his email, which he seems to have, can you ask him to bring them on a thumb drive when he comes to Stockbridge and leave them at the town hall? Ideally with that information that Wayne, Wayne and I have asked for?
Okay, I'll ask him.
And can you, can you let me know what his answer is, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
That one gets seconded more than any other.
Any discussion, all things.
No, just.
Call the roll, please, Jennifer.
Sure. Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Nancy?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all. We're adjourned.